Good evening. It is six o'clock P M. The Imperial City Board of Trustees will convene our first open session.
Okay, so if each of you will stand and raise your right hand, this will be painless. Okay, so I state your name.
Mr. Brown.
Okay, do solemnly swear
Solemnly swear.
that I will support and defend
Support and defend.
the Constitution of the United States
The Constitution of the States.
and the Constitution of the State of California
And the Constitution of the State of California.
against all enemies
All enemies.
Against all enemies.
foreign and domestic
Foreign and domestic.
that I will bear true faith and allegiance
As a party of true faith and allegiance.
to the Constitution of the United States
The Constitution of the United States.
and the Constitution of the State of California
of the State of California.
that I take this obligation freely
that I take this obligation freely
without any mental reservation
without any mental reservation
or purpose of evasion
or purpose of evasion.
and that I will well and faithfully
and that I will well and faithfully
discharge the duties
discharge the duties.
upon which I am about to enter.
upon which I am about to enter.
Congratulations, you're now officially board members.
Thank you.
And and if you think about it afterward, there's there's a there's you'll sign one of these and 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 will obviously obtain Mr. Brown's signature at a later date, but he's taken the oath and so he is officially a board member, so there there are four of you. And I I would assume your bylaws would would require that that a a majority of you agree if there's an action to be taken. So when there is four of you, that that means three, if there's four. So also means two if there's if there were three of you, but in any case, so. Okay.
So now we will do our flag salute, so trustee Sanchez, would you like to lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republics of which the House is, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There are no adjustments to this agenda. We are moving into public appearances. Matters not appearing on the agenda. If you wish to address the board concerning any item within the board's jurisdiction, please raise your hand and be acknowledged by the president. And at that time, state your name and address for the record. The president reserves the right to place a time limit on each person's presentation of three minutes. It is requested that longer presentations be submitted to the council in writing. Are there any public appearances?
We did not receive any by electronic means either.
Thank you. Matters appearing on the agenda. If you wish to address the board concerning any item appearing on the agenda, please raise your hand and be acknowledged by the president. And at that time, state your name and address for the record. The president reserves the right to place a time limit on each person's presentation of three minutes. Is there anyone that would like to appear? Make a public appearance for something on the agenda?
Madam Clerk, we have not received anything at this time.
Okay, we're moving on to our first item. We have a short presentation provided by the United by Live United for Libraries, which is a division of A L A. It is a short takes for trustee series. It's eight minutes. And it's the first series is what it means to be a trustee. It's what happens when you have so many means of technology.
Director of Marketing Communications for United for Libraries. We are the division of the American Library Association for Trustees, advocates, friends, and foundations. Today, I'm here speaking with our executive director, Sally Gardner-Reed, about what it means to be a library trustee. So Sally, what does it mean to be a library trustee?
I think the simplest answer is in the name itself. It's to hold the public trust to ensure that their investment in their library is employed to ensure that best practices are used to deliver services and programs that the community wants and needs to grow intellectually and to have a quality of life that enables them to be great citizens and full participants in their local government and to enjoy lifelong learning.
Is there a difference between governing boards and advisory boards?
There is a difference. It's a pretty big difference, actually. Governing boards have the full responsibility for all assets of the library. That's their fiduciary responsibility. It means that they hire, evaluate, and confire the library director. The library director's a direct report to them. They are typically elected at large by the community or else they're appointed by the governing body of their entity, whether it's county or city. And again, they do have the full responsibility for the library. Advisory boards are, as the name implies, they are to just simply advise the library director. They're representatives of the community. And they sometimes help with the same types of jobs that the governing board does. They assist with policy settings. Sometimes they assist the city or county manager with the library director's evaluation. But they have no direct authority over the library director and no direct authority over the library itself.
And for the purposes of our discussion today, are we talking more about governing boards or advisory boards?
We'll be talking throughout the series really more about governing boards. But actually, much of what we'll be discussing will be applicable to advisory boards as well.
Earlier, you mentioned fiduciary responsibility. Can you tell me a little bit more about that?
Yes, most people think of fiduciary responsibility as simply financial responsibility, but it actually is much more than that. It is a responsibility to act in good faith always, to have no self-interest, to have no conflict of interest. That means no hiring of kin, no letting contracts out to your brother-in-law. It really is acting at that very high level of integrity in all actions.
And we're going to talk in another session about board ethics, which we were just referencing. Can you tell me a little bit about the pros and cons of having a fiduciary board?
I am a firm believer that it's always best to have a fiduciary board. They give a lot of protection to the library director because the library director is a direct report to that fiduciary board. And I believe that the fiduciary board is a lot more directly connected to the community. When there isn't a governing board, it is typically the case that the library director is a direct report to either the city manager or the mayor or the county administration. And that means that that library director is typically at-will employee. And that means that if the the county or city administration finds some of the materials in the library objectionable and want them removed from the shelves, the director is in a pretty difficult spot to keep them there because he or she can literally be fired by not complying. Also, when the library director is a direct report to the city or county administration, they have to walk a pretty fine line in being direct advocates for the library's budget. So advisory boards do have less liability than governing boards, but the director has far less protection.
You mentioned less liability. What do you mean by that?
Well, when you are a fiduciary for a nonprofit, you have a certain level of risk because you are in charge of the assets of that nonprofit. Courts are generally very liberal in their take on nonprofit board members. So they understand that nonprofits are a corporation and board members acting in good faith within a nonprofit are generally protected by the courts, not always, but generally. You don't often hear of library board members being sued, for example. But there is a level of risk. So one of the things that library boards can do is indemnify themselves. And that means that they write into their bylaws that the library will cover board members and their expenses if they're sued, regardless of how frivolous by the library's budget. So that helps protect individual board members to a degree. But most attorneys will advise board members of nonprofits to be sure that they have directors and officers insurance. And this insurance covers the board in total as well as individuals for all legal fees and all court costs if they are sued, with the exception of being sued for discrimination cases in which individuals on a board are found guilty. So it's a really good insurance to have.
So there really is a lot of responsibility being trusted.
There really is, but there's also a lot of gratification.
Can you describe effective board-director relationships for us?
Yes, I think simply put, it's when trustees govern and directors manage. But that sometimes is easier said than done. It's not always a clear line when governing lets off and management begins. So I think one of the ways to sort of test it is that boards should be looking outward. They should be looking at community. They should be setting policies for delivering services to that community, promoting the library to the community, advocating for library services to the community. The director should be seen, I think, as the chief executive officer, the C E O. He or she should be the one responsible for the staff, for developing services and programs to meet the needs of the community, for managing the budget on a regular basis, overseeing that financial piece, doing all the operations that a normal C E O would do to move the library forward and to make sure that the library is meeting the needs of the community. So I think it's a good relationship is one where there's a high level of trust, where trustees, as I say, govern, where library librarians manage. And they there's not micromanagement on the part of the board, but on the other hand, the director keeps them well informed and respects their input and respects them as well.
Can you give us a concrete example of this?
Yes, I think the development of a collection is a policy is a really good area to look at. So for example, the library board of trustees will adopt a collection development policy. They will look at a draft that perhaps the director brings to them. They will ensure that it meets the needs of their community, that it works for their library. They'll modify any draft that comes to them and finally adopt it. When they do, they stand behind that policy and hand it off to the director. And that policy provides a framework for collection development by the staff. So the trustees don't decide which books to purchase and what materials should go into the collection. That's where the staff decide. But as I say, the board needs to stand behind it because it is their policy. So when materials are challenged, and that does happen from time to time, people have differing views on what's objectionable, the board needs to be prepared to stand behind their own policy. Now, most collection development policies will come with a reconsideration form for those who find materials objectionable. They can fill out the form. That usually goes to a collection development committee for their feedback, and then it goes to the director for his or her comments. And then if that's dissatisfied, the person who is challenging, it can go to the board. If that material was selected well within the framework of the policy, again, I have to say that it is the board's policy and it's really their job to stand behind their own policy.
That sounds like a very important and often difficult role for library trustees. And we'll be talking about policy development in another session. Thank you, Sally. This has been a really good discussion about what it means to be a library trustee. And I can see from our discussion here that when there's a great library, there's a great board and director relationship, providing a good foundation for success. And I'd like our listeners to know that we've developed a list of additional resources, which your director will provide to you. We invite you to review that list and discuss any questions that you have with your library director. Thank you.
Any comments based on the video that you just saw? Or is there any comments by our city manager or attorney that they'd like to add to that?
I would just say if you look at item D three on your agenda, that's something that will be you you'll be taking up in a couple of minutes. And so I I would think, for example, some of the questions you might have had watching that, well, which are weak? Right? And so you you have bylaws that the that the city council has adopted. And when at at this meeting, we'll be fleshing a lot of that information out for you. So that that will be important to pick a date that that you can all attend. But in any case, that will be the time where we'll we'll talk about some of those some of those questions that I'm sure you have from watching that brief video.
I just want to say thank you. Give me a great baseline and some really helpful information as to what's to be expected as a board member. So thank you for sharing that with us. Trustees, we'll go ahead and move into our first action item, which is for the reorganization of the Imperial City Library Board of Trustees for calendar year 2022. Article five, section one of the bylaws of the Board of Trustees of City of Imperial Public Library states, "The officers of the board shall be a president, a vice president, and a secretary. The president and vice president shall be elected annually from the board's own number. The secretary shall be the director of community services." So we are looking at the selection of president and vice president. Are there any nominations for the selection of president?
Just a quick comment. The president with the city council, they do that same action on an annual basis where they select a mayor and a mayor pro tem. Basically, what you'll be doing on a meeting-to-meeting basis as president or vice president is running the meetings. So some of what Ms. Holler is doing this evening in terms of bringing up the item for action and taking the roll call and those kinds of things, that that will be basically your job as president to run the meetings. If there are resolutions or if there's other actions that require a signature, usually that's the president that will sign those or the vice president in the president's absence. So basically, in in selecting these positions, if if you assume those, I'm I would say it would be helpful if you're comfortable doing that. But even if you're not, you you'll you'll get comfortable very quickly, I would predict. And so
My redness has already gone away.
And so you shouldn't you shouldn't be bashful about if your colleagues pick you to be one or one or the other. And it's for a year, so it doesn't last forever. But it might seem like that, but it doesn't last forever.
Well, in the absence of really knowing anyone, really knowing anybody on this board, is there anyone who's who's had prior board experience? That might be a good starting point. I thought I'd never been on any type of board before, so I don't really have that sort of experience. Does anyone, any of the other board members been on a board before?
Nope.
So there goes that.
It was a good one.
That was a great effort, though.
Some something to consider is that Mr. Brown spoke up.
There we go. There's always a way to nominate somebody. I was just going to make that recommendation. Richard, what do you think about it? Sounds like there's a motion, so. Motion for Richard for president. We have a motion. Do we have a second? Do we have a second? Is there anyone else that's interested in serving as president? So I'll go ahead and roll call. Okay. Trustee Altomirano? Trustee Blackwood? Trustee Sanchez? That was a yes? Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Okay, so trustee Brown is, oh, I'm sorry, is now the president of the Imperial Board of Trustees. Richard, you also need to cast a vote. Oh, I'm sorry. Trustee Brown? Thank you, trustee Brown. So we'll move on to the selection of the vice president. I'll entertain nominations. There's also no shame in nominating yourself.
If I understood correctly, the vice president does what the same as the president, but if when the president is not present at the meetings, either virtually or in person.
Correct.
So the duties of of the officers, the vice president, the vice president shall, in the absence of the president, perform the duties of the president.
A motion for the president.
Is that your motion for the vice president? Is that what? So I hear a motion for trustee Sanchez as vice president? Do I hear a second? Okay, so we'll take a roll call vote. Trustee Altomirano? Trustee Blackwood? Trustee Brown? Or President Brown? And trustee Sanchez?
Yes.
Congratulations. So we will, I will go ahead and we'll resituate. Yeah, go ahead and move to our new positions. We have our president and vice president placards, and then we have our trustee placards. We're moving on to, well, now I step back. Thank you. Yes, President Brown. You can take over the running of the the meeting at this point.
So we move on to D two, especially in our action determination term by law. Function of terms by laws. Does that mean as in the library, just random drawing through six of three different terms?
Yes. So I'll give you some background on this. For the bylaws of the Board of Trustees for the City of Imperial Public Library, Article three, section two states the term of office and compensation. The trustees shall hold office for three years, serving without compensation. The members of the first board appointed shall so classify themselves by lot that one of their number shall go out of office at the end of the current fiscal year, at June, two at the end of one year thereafter, and two at the end of two years thereafter. We have four envelopes. Well, we have five envelopes. We will have, and they're mixed up. So I will go ahead and pass the envelopes down. You can select any of them, and that the information inside will tell you the length of your term.
Before you do that, I have kind of a comment slash question. I understand that there's four people here because one person, as it turns out, is going to be moving. And so at least until a replacement is selected, we're going to have four members. Right? Could we take out the envelope that would designate the term to end this first fiscal year? And so that we would have two members serving two years and two members serving three years? And then at the point in time a fifth member is selected, they would default to the one one-year term? I think that makes sense. In fact, I think if there's a new member appointed at the end of this fiscal year, that could be the start of a new three-year term because that's when the first one would end.
And these are marked for one year and two year, as is written in the bylaws.
Okay, I thought you said something.
It it says three years, but I
at the end of one or two at after.
Oh. I apologize just one moment. We're all new at this. We're all new at this. Shep- sheperty song.
And and just so that we we clarify this, we we have the the first, the date, the the end of terms is June thirtieth in a given year. So no term will end this June thirtieth. So two people will serve for the completion of this year, plus a full calendar or fiscal year. And then two others will serve the remainder of this fiscal year plus two years thereafter.
So we have four envelopes before us with um two that have two years and two that have three years. Okay, they're all mixed up. So we will start with the president? So President Brown, uh the envelope that was remaining is a um for two years, a two-year term. President Sanchez, two years also? Thank you very much. Do we need a motion or?
No, no, no motion is needed. The action was the uh drawing of the lots. Minutes will reflect your terms.
Mister President, um on item D three, uh we we have the discussion action of a strategic planning date selection. Um, and um so we're looking to our trustees and our vice president and president to um discuss a date and select a date so that we can have a special meeting uh to um plan, um make some plans and and um orientation for the trustees.
I do apologize. I dropped my signal dropped out as we were still doing D two. Um, was that already completed?
Oh, yes, sorry, Mister President. I did read into the record. Uh, your envelope was for two-year term.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, the Ri- uh Mister Brown, this is Dennis Bernice speaking. With respect to item D three, which is picking a date and time to have a a meet as potentially a special meeting uh for an orientation, I guess the first thing you might want to think about is how long? Uh, are we thi- are we thinking to accomplish what we want to accomplish in one session? And and what kind of timeframe are we thinking?
Yes, we are looking for the consideration of um about a three-hour timeframe. Um, the reason we're asking that is uh there will be further videos, one as was presented to you with just that, you know, baseline, as you stated, for what is expected of a trustee. Further, we'll go into um the legal review of the Brown Act and anything within a public forum. We'll also be able to take a tour of the library and discuss soon-to-be projects and and what's on our radar, and then discuss with you, you know, why you wanted to be appointed to the board, really talk about your own platforms and and just getting able to know each other and and have clear direction where the library will be going under under your leadership. That's the objective of of that meeting.
Does anyone have a problem with trying to do it all in a three-hour period?
We'll make sure we have coffee and snacks.
Depending on the the time of day you choose, yes, we'll we'll make sure that uh that that aspect of it will be taken care of, so you don't need to bring a sack of lunch or anything.
Fortunately, the president was. So we'll go ahead and uh continue the discussion until the president president can um reconnect. Um, does anyone have any, um have you had a chance to look at your calendar to come up with some um proposals?
Soon do we want to? Month or the wo- or?
I would say within the month.
Okay. Uh, it has to be a weekday?
Um, it's.
I don't believe.
No.
Uh, I think if, one of the things you'll learn about is calling a special meeting. And one of the things that a a board president can do, or in the absence of the board president, the vice president can call a special meeting. And so you're not limited to, uh, you know, we're here at six o'clock in the evening on a Tuesday. Um, I I would ask that you be mindful of the fact that if you were if you were suggesting Saturday night at nine P M., that staff mi- might have an issue with that. But uh um I I would say we would want to be flexible and respectful of your schedules. Certainly, the bylaws call for your regular meetings to be uh the second Tuesday of the month at six o'clock. So if if you did, if you kept with that, um I I would assume that most of you kind of looked at your schedules and Tuesday evenings uh work, so you might consider that. You might consider maybe a little bit earlier start. I'm not sure if 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 how you're if you're employed outside of your home, if the if your jobs can would accommodate a little bit earlier start, uh but um. So that's something that I would I would think about if I were in your seat in terms of kind of u- using the already established date. But like I said, I with our council, uh we we sometimes did weekends just because it was a longer process and it was a multiple-day thing, so.
That's, we have done Saturday mornings before. If if that was gonna be your question, if everyone be available, we can, we've done from from nine to twelve. Obviously, if there's additional sessions needed at that point, we we take that into consideration at the next meeting, but so so we have done that. We can make ourselves available.
I I I have a very open schedule except for uh Fridays. I am like, I cannot do anything before one on Fridays. And uh Mondays, uh I have one or two, the following two mon- well, Martin Luther King's is coming, but starting February the seventh, I will not be available on Monday, but other than that, other days. But I don't know what the rest of the board.
I have, I have a question. So once we decide on a day that we're having recurrent meetings or like the day of the week, is it able to change? Like, if we need to, or no?
So your your regular meetings are set by the bylaws, so they are the second Tuesday of each month at six o'clock, but.
Just for the special meeting?
For just the special meeting, the extended time. Now, that being said, if if the board did want to amend the bylaws or needed to for a different time, you could take action at a certain point to do that if a different meeting date um needed to be chosen or a different time on that date. So so there is a vehicle to get there, but as it stands right now, your regular meetings are are posted on that date.
Uh, has anyone suggested possibility of doing it Saturday yet?
Yes.
Saturday, nine to twelve actually sounds perfect for me. That would work. Also, weekdays, I do kind of work a regular eight to five, so four maybe would be okay, but it would need to be in the evenings for me would be best.
I work a pretty erratic schedule, so anything on the weekend is preferable.
Saturdays first.
So if we're, excuse me, um, we're looking at January. Um, so this Saturday will be the fifteenth. Uh, we have two following weekends after that, which is the twenty-second and the twenty-ninth.
Second works a little bit better for me.
What was the si- was there a suggested date yet? I'm sorry, I I missed that.
Um, Saturday, Saturday, um, President, um.
Yes.
Saturday, January twenty-second, from nine to twelve P M. is the recommended date.
Yes, um, if that's, if anyone, if everyone's good with that, I would motion that we do January twenty-second.
I- 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 if it looks like January twenty-second at nine P M. Nine, nine A M.
I said coffee, Dennis. I didn't mean.
If that works for everybody, then one option that you'll learn about under the Brown Act would be to take an action to adjourn this meeting to that date and time. And so doing that, then you don't have to call a special meeting if you adjourn this meeting, because then it will be properly posted and all of that kind of stuff. So if.
Are we done with all this aside of this for today?
Well, I, um, if you if you do, if you do nothing more than give the direction, then s- your your staff will properly post a special meeting. If you want to adjourn this meeting, that would require a motion and a second and a vote. Either way, works. And so hearing no motion, I would just say staff will schedule a special meeting for January twenty-second at nine A M.
Yeah.
At this location. I don't know why I have P M. on the brain.
Right, do we need a motion and a second to for that meeting? We're not adjourning right now.
Um.
We have staff reports.
Okay. I mean, it wouldn't hurt. I ve- if you want to pick that date, then then it can be reflected in the minutes, so.
I'll make the motion. Saturday, January twenty-second at nine A M.
Mister President, did you want to oversee this um motion?
Uh, sorry, I'd like to, um, should we do the roll call vote? Or do I need to second the motion?
Okay, we just got a second. Thank you.
I've been to every council meetings for the last twenty-five years. I'm all confused.
Okay, so a roll call vote. Trustee Altamorano? Trustee Blackwood?
Yes.
Vice President Brown? Oh, I I'm sorry, I, President Brown? I'm President, uh Vice President Sanchez?
Yes.
Motion carries four zero. Moving on to reports. So the staff report, um, I, right now, I just want to thank everyone for your time. Um, time is the most valuable of all things, so um I really appreciate the time that you're taking uh to commit to the library. Um, we have a lot of amazing things going on, a lot of opportunities. Um, so I just really want to say thank you, and I look forward to a a wonderful three years with you all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Or more. Get re-elected.
Just for a minute. Yeah, yes.
That's something that you're normally in in the future?
That that that's something, I I don't recall if the bylaws specifically address requiring that. That I I would think that's something that you could certainly choose to do or not do. Uh, if unless it's called for in the bylaws, and I don't recall what the bylaws say in that regard. Uh, so, but before we go to uh E two, which is the trustee report, I just want to quickly echo what Ms. Holler said uh about uh thanking you for your service. Uh, and 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 as you heard bri- may have heard briefly from the uh from the bylaws, you're 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 called upon to serve without compensation. So this is the 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 ultimate in in volunteering uh for the City of Imperial, and and we certainly appreciate the fact that uh you're motivated to serve uh by uh all good things. Uh, and uh, uh, so we thank you. Thank you for that, and look forward to uh uh Saturday.
I don't have anything other than just just me three, so thank you. And I I look forward, I get excited when when uh the community wants to be involved in in the process and the decision-making, and so thank you, and I'm excited to work with all of you and see where our library goes.
I I agree, and I look forward to uh getting to know all of you a lot, a a lot more, especially on the twenty-second. Thank you.
So do we officially move on to E two now? Trustees' reports?
Yes.
That's something that just isn't done since we don't really have anything in official capacity yet.
I would say if there's if there's any comments of now that you're all officially sworn in and have taken your oath of office, if there's anything you'd like to share with the public, um, obviously, we're, we have an unscheduled vacancy, so um usually by by word of mouth is the best recruitment. But uh if there's anything that maybe prompted you to to take on these roles and and turn in your application or anything you'd like to share, this would be a great time to do so. Or not.
I just want to say thank you. Uh, I'm excited to be here. Uh, been a resident of Imperial for about fifteen-plus years. Uh, been to the library numerous times uh with my children, and just really excited at the opportunity to come and serve and do something for the community, and looking forward to getting to meet my colleagues later at the twenty-second. Thank you.
I'm super new to being on a board, but I'm really excited. And uh like, uh Vice President Sanchez, I've been in Imperial for a while. I moved here about like twelve years ago. Um, I went to Imperial High School, been to the library a lot of times, and now my daughter, I bring her here and check books out occasionally, so um I'm really excited just to help and also learn about all the ins and outs, because I never thought about, you know, how books get approved or just, you know, the different projects that's going on, so I'm I'm really looking forward to it. Thank you.
Well, I'm also have been a long-term resident of the City of Imperial, fifteen, sixteen years here. I have great memories of the library, spending a lot of time with my children, knowing.
Sorry, I'm freezing up a little bit. Can you hear me? Or is she was she done? I'm sorry.
Yes. She's um, she's finished, Mister President.
Oh, I I apologize. I'm having a surprise reception in my in my house. Um, I, I've I've been, I've lived in Imperial for about eleven years, and uh I come from a a family that had lived in Imperial for many, many years. Um, and I'm just really excited to be doing this. Um, I really, I really think that libraries are are a treasure that often aren't aren't used, and people don't use them as much as they used to in in modern society, and I think there's a way to balance the old and the new. And I'm excited to see uh what comes up.
Thank you. Mister President, you'll um, you are able to adjourn the meeting.
Okay, and unless there's uh unless there is anything else, uh we adjourn the spe- by motion, we adjourn the special meeting to January twenty-second at nine A M.
Thank you. Thank you.